Thank you for joining us this evening, this regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, at seven P. M. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Linder.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Gary Eldrick.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones. George Katz.
Here.
Joe Humphrey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Corvus President.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Bill Coons is going to lead in the invocation, and Councilman George Glover is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Just a word from our seventh president, Andrew Jackson. Without union, our independence and liberty would never have been achieved. Without union, they never can be maintained. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. Father, I lift the Park City City Council before you that they will do the work of the people and do it well and seek advice where advice is needed. Father, as a former president said, we need unity. We don't always have to agree, but Father, we need to agree on what is best. In this case, what is best for Park City. So Father bless the council members as they do the work that they were voted to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Melvin?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
And Jim?
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes seven zero. We don't have anybody signed up for public forum this evening, so we'll go ahead and start with staff reports. And we'll start with our city administrator, Jack Whitson. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Talked a little bit about sixty-first Street, engineers, that's a project, future project, a couple of years. Got the survey done. They're working right now on calculating the drainage. They'd like to be able to shorten the bridge to give more distance between air cap drive and the end of the bridge to provide better access into air cap drive. And so they're working on that, and they have the FEMA program to do the calculations. It's looking very promising that they can shorten the bridge. That does two things. It provides a little better access to air cap drive, first of all, plus it cuts down the cost of the bridge if you make it shorter, obviously. So hopefully, they can continue to do that. Bear Hill, we received another contract on Bear Hill, which is good. Also, we had somewhat of a proposal to buy the rest of Bear Hill out. This is the undeveloped part of it. We've made a counterproposal back to them. We'll just have to see how that comes out. We'll bring it back to the council if it works out, but we will be making a counterproposal to them. And we might get out of the real estate business, maybe, don't know. Well, at least almost all of it. They still have a few lots. Even if we sell the undeveloped part, we still have a few lots that we need to sell interior. That's really about it for me. And if there's any specific questions, we try to glad, try to answer them.
And George?
I'm just curious, what's undeveloped about it?
Well, there's no roads, water, sewer. It's planted into lots, but there's no roads, water, and sewer.
Then it's something that could happen in the future?
Yeah, yeah. If somebody buys it and the council agrees to do the water, sewer, and streets and the specials, the people that are trying to look at this.
Without going into too much.
Right. Have a full plate on the fence. And I don't perceive that, even if they buy it, that this is many, many years down the road when they'll try to develop it.
Okay, I'm just curious, why is it undeveloped?
It just was never really water, sewer, and streets. It has about seventy thousand dollars worth of specials on it, though. We've got to make sure it gets taken care of and.
But they're not going to put a horse farm or anything on it?
Oh, no.
Okay.
It'll stay as a subdivision.
Okay, thanks, Jack.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments for yet? Not seeing any, we'll move on to our director of public works, Rick Norman. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works report for this evening, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen. In our park department, we had two staff members, Bruce and J. T., attended the Shade Tree Conference in Topeka on January twelfth and thirteenth at the BMX entrance, just on the north side of that. We did take down a chain link fence and install posts and a cable. So now there's walking access for that. We did set the post for the park signs at Osage Trail. There's one on Mill Heights and one on Tuesday. We did get those set. In the street department, the old street and park office at the old plant was re-roofed. On the weekend of January fourteenth, we applied thirty tons of material for the wintry mix that we got. We were probably several degrees in being a substantially different situation. If the temperature would have got any, almost any colder at all, we would have ended up a lot different than we were. Also, to follow up on a comment that Councilmember Jones had mentioned last week about the signage on the construction on Fifty-third Street, we contacted the engineer. They did fail to put up a stop sign at the entrance there to the redcoats and two yield signs, also a divided median sign there. Contractor did get that up. They, in regards to the speed limit for the westbound traffic, the speed limit is thirty miles per hour all the way through the intersection. It doesn't change until you get to the east end of the bridge, and then it resumes the forty. The reason why the location of the speed limit thirty is now changed is because of the phase of the project they're in. At some point, they're going to put a sidewalk west of that drive, and at that point, they will extend the thirty miles per hour further west, which will go into effect as that phase allows. In the water and sewer department, the average work orders per day for the first two weeks of January was nineteen. Be glad to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Rick? Rick, did you have any comments about the new vehicles? We talked about that.
Yeah, I mentioned a little bit last council meeting. The guys were using predominantly the one tons that we just recently purchased, which had new plows and spreaders, and they worked really well. We had some tightening up of some equipment on it, but the guys really liked them. The hydraulics are tight on it, and with how the storm was, it worked out good. We didn't have to get a lot of the big trucks out, but they worked wonderful for us.
All right, thank you, Rick. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is our motion. John?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
And Gary?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. The next item on the agenda, under item A, new business, is consider the Pride Program Entry to Government Resolution for two thousand and seventeen. This is something that we typically do to support the Park City Pride and their events that they hold within the, in the community. Gary?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
And Melvin?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Linder.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Gary Eldrick.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones. George Katz.
Aye.
Joe Humphrey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that passes seven zero. Do you have a resolution number? Okay. All right. We'll get that later. And that will bring us to item B, which is consider a resolution ordering the abatement of nuisance at fifteen-twenty-six East Evanston and authorizing the city to abate the nuisance if not corrected within ten days. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is a necessity. Doesn't happen very often, but involves a nuisance at this location. The nuisance is specifically an old couch that's abandoned near the front of the property. Under other circumstances, if the owner was at the house or the possessor of that couch lived in the house, we could issue them a ticket and talk to them. This owner is out of state, and there's been no response to the attempts to contact by code enforcement. So our ordinance requires us to go through this process, which is for you to adopt the resolution. And then they have ten days to abate the nuisance, and if not, then we're able to do that ourselves. So I would recommend that you adopt this resolution.
Okay. Jim?
I would move that we approve this with discussion, to be the proper language.
Okay.
Just one question is, do we assess the fee back? Do we assess the fee for removal back to the landowner?
We have the ability to do that without, that's a kind of a lengthy process. And if all this amounts to us going out and picking up an old couch and getting rid of it, it may not be worth it. But yes, we have the ability under the law to do that. It may not be a practical one, but I don't know enough about the circumstances.
Okay.
Okay.
This is the, this process will provide us that ability, if that's your question. So we're not giving that up.
Okay, that's, so I move that we approve it.
Okay. George?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Linder.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Gary Eldrick.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones. George Katz.
Aye.
Joe Humphrey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that motion passes seven zero.
It's Resolution nine fifty-four dash two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. That brings us to item C, which is consider bids for the audiovisual systems for the new city hall law enforcement facility. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't get the bids.
Thursday, we took bids for the audiovisual system and the security system. We received two bids on the audiovisual, and that's what we have here. The bids.
No, it only got to one cover page for P. E. C. was the only thing that went out.
Okay. One bid was twenty-six thousand, the other bid was twenty-five. The one that was twenty-six didn't acknowledge the fact that there was addendum, and that presents a problem because they could come back later had they gotten the bid and say, "Oh, we didn't realize that you changed this, that, and the other." But the others did. The successful bidder is McClellan Sound. They are currently working over there, and their estimate, well, their bid was twenty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and that is below the engineer's estimate. So we recommend that you accept this bid. Now, the security system, they didn't have anything on the addendum, and there were some other parts of it that just wasn't according to whole. And so I rejected that bid. We're going to rebid that, I think, the nineteenth of February, along with the video cameras and stuff and the phone system. So you will have several bids that you'll be considering next time. Also, I reviewed some of their prequalifications to some of the bidders, because I was kind of concerned we only had one bid, and they had a page and a half of prequalification stuff like, for example, in order to string the war, you had to be certified by the war, the person that produced the war, that you took their one-day course on how to string the war, which I thought was a little much. There was several things that I felt like was just really excessive and really knocked out a lot of people that do that kind of work, like down here at Milltail does that type of work. They couldn't bid it under those qualifications. We have electricians that do that work and have done that work for us here that wouldn't qualify under that. So got back with the engineers, told them they needed to readdress these qualifications so that the bids are more bidders. Hopefully, that will result in getting us some more bidders and a better price, so.
Can you just cover the scope of work of the audiovisual, so what that entails since we don't have? I mean, you don't have to go into extreme detail, but.
Audiovisual will be like TV sets for like the council chambers.
The conference rooms.
Offices and things like that. The training room, the video feeds for the training room and stuff like that. Security, we call it the security system or the wiring. That's actually running cable to each of the offices so they have internet connection and stuff, so, and cable connection. And then the phone system will be an IP system. I don't know how many of you understand what an IP system is. It's all internet at that point. It all goes over the internet, but it gives you a lot more functionality. For example, if I got a call here, I'm talking to somebody, but I have to rush out to a meeting down in Wichita, I can transfer it to my cell phone and continue the conversation and go to Wichita, for example. I can also monitor who's in their office and who's not in their office. That has that capability. So it's more of the twenty-first century stuff. It was felt like that if we're going to spend the money on a building, we need to do it right. And we don't want to put old systems that in a couple of years, we may have to redo. And so, for example, on this wiring, we have a, which will be up for bid next time, Cat five cable, I don't know if you know what Cat five is. It's a type of cable that's got multitude of cables in it. We're going to go, we have an additive for a Cat six, which is the top-of-the-line cable. Cat five, still functional, but if you add new things in the future, it may not be adequate. So we put in an additive alternate to the city council whether or not they want to go with a little bit more expensive cable and be top-of-the-line or go back to less than that. And I would say, just off the top of my head, we're probably talking maybe ten thousand dollars between the two. And that's just my guess. Any other questions?
George?
Probably give you more information if you really need it.
What you said is under engineer's estimate. Does that mean that we're still under budget or on or under budget?
On this, yes.
What I mean.
Well, we're at what was estimated originally. Let's put it that way.
On the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we had a couple of change orders, small ones that we've done so far. So there have been a few change orders, but.
Okay. I'm going to approve this.
Okay, so we want to accept the low bidder of McClellan Sound?
Yes, we recommend you do that. Twenty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
That's what I said.
All right, Melvin?
I'll second it for her. I got, where's the money come from? Capital improvement?
It comes from the C. I. P. Selling the land. We set aside that money to go towards city hall. So it'll come out of that, or the bond issue, either one, so.
Okay. All right. John, did you have any questions?
I guess I was just going to comment, George can probably relate to this too, but I guess I can kind of remember coming in before where we had no sound system. Kind of the old dinosaur way, we didn't have the buttons to push, it was more a raised near hand, but this will be a great upgrade once again to have. Makes the mediums go a lot smoother for us and for the public that comes and watches.
That's very true. Very true.
A little easier on the eyeballs instead of trying to look at it, something fifty feet away from you. You'll have it right there, so.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second. Not any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, item D, which is consider agreement with Sedgwick County for provision of inspection and enforcement services related to domestic water wells and private sewer systems in the city. Jack or Doug, who wants to go first?
Well, Doug's looked at the agreement, he can answer that. I can tell you what it's for.
Okay.
We still have areas in Park City that we don't have, doesn't have access to sanitary sewer. Valentine's area there, once in a while, their septic tanks go bad or areas where they want to build, there's no sewer there or water, and so they have to build a well or they have to build a pond or something like that. We don't do enough of that to build an expertise in that. And so we have, for several years, used Sedgwick County to do that for us, and they just keep the money. In other words, if there's a three hundred dollar permit, they just keep three hundred. They do the inspection, they make sure it's sized properly and stuff like that. And so basically, that's what this agreement does. It allows them to continue giving us that service, so.
Okay, Doug, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, if any of you have read it, you might have noticed that the agreement binds us to adopt certain codes, which we don't have at present, and that'll be coming in the future if you approve the agreement. That's no problem, and the purpose for that is to allow the inspectors, if they have to take enforcement action, to be able to enforce down in district court in Sedgwick County with their personnel essentially our codes, because they're going to mirror Sedgwick County's codes. And again, like Jack said, that makes sense, given the fact that we aren't doing this. We don't have the expertise, and they're doing it for us. And finally, this has a thirty-day out for either party. So to the extent this ever would become any kind of a contentious matter or a problem, you always have the ability to get out in thirty days.
Thank you, Doug. Okay. Gary?
Motion to approve the agreement is submitted.
Melvin?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, item E, which is consider changes to the water and sewer rates. In your packet, you have the ordinance. And our ordinance, if the council takes no action by the end of January thirty-first of the year, then there's an automatic three percent rate increase to both water and then sewer as well. So this is on the agenda so we can talk about whether or not we need to look at it. The last time that we had a sewer rate increase was in two thousand and fourteen. We cannot find the last time we had a water rate increase.
I think about two thousand and eight or something.
That's kind of what we're, kind of what we're looking at, but we can't find the specific date that we've seen, seen a rate increase there. One thing that I'd like to bring up is, at the C. C. U. A., we've been talking about the sewer treatment plant and specifically possibly reaching its capacity in two thousand and nineteen and going to cause us where we're going to have to do some type of plant expansion there. Once again, that'd be between the two cities' responsibility for that plant expansion. The C. C. U. A. is in the preliminary stages of just investigating what that looks like. We don't have any numbers, but with two thousand and nineteen, right around the corner, it is something we need to take seriously and start looking at it, what we need to do. I don't think we need to do a three percent increase, but I would like to see us at least do a two percent increase for the purpose of building more reserves up so that we can pay cash for things. This last project we did, Park City was able to pay cash for our portion of it, and I think it's good when we stay in a strong cash position, when we have to do any type of upgrades, that we don't have to borrow money, and we can just write a check and be done with it. So I am asking that we at least do that two percent rate increase on the sewer again for anticipation of a plant expansion and what that may look like. Over three years, I think we've come up with the totals that that would raise about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, additional money that would be added to our current surplus. So I just want to start questions. George?
What is our current sewer rate?
Got that, Danielle?
It's twenty-four dollars for the base. Our base rates twenty-four dollars and for every month and for every three thousand gallons or less of water. Anything over three thousand is three twenty-five per thousand per month, and it's based on a January, February, January through March average. So whatever that average is, that's your sewer rate for the rest of the year.
Okay, it comes back to me now. And I was just looking about what two percent would amount to.
So off that twenty-four dollars, a two percent race increase would be forty-eight cents added to that sewer rate utility fund. And once again, that grows to a little over seven hundred thousand within three years. And we're looking at some type of plant inspect or expansion going on probably within two thousand and eighteen to prepare for two thousand and nineteen. And these are based off projections of growth that we see within the city. We talk about the apartments coming in, the shopping center potential there. So if we start seeing more growth within the community, and this, this goes back to Bel Air as well, too. So if Bel Air sees more growth than kind of what they're anticipating, that directly impacts our sewer treatment plan. So I'd really, I'd just like to hear some good discussion on what you guys think. My thing is, is I'd just like to see us keep cash in the bank where we can write checks for stuff. I hate seeing us have to go out and bond things. And if we can put a little cushion between us to, to keep that strong cash position so we don't have to bond, that'd be great. Gary?
Well, I'm in agreement that if we can do something now that will save interest, ultimately, we're serving the community better by not having to pay that interest. I'm curious, do we need to look at the water at this time, too, or are you looking at these separately?
It's open for discussion on either part. One thing we would like to do is we'd like to figure out some way where we could get the new water meters installed where they would be read cellular through, so we wouldn't have to go back and worry about people going out and doing manual reading, which causes errors or, so we could try to track that. There are some great things with that, the ability to be here at the office and turn the water off if somebody's behind. I mean, we, we sometimes see seventy-plus shut-offs. When we have to do shut-offs, then we got to create a big list in here. Everybody's got to go out, get everybody turned off. People start getting turned off, then they come in, pay a bill, and want their water turned back on, and we spend all this time on it. And if we put ourselves in a position where we could upgrade, and we're probably talking one point three million to put in an all-new water meter. one point three million to put in all-new water meters, if we wanted to do that. I'm not suggesting that's probably what we're going to do, but we should start with any new development and new meters being installed. And, you know, Jack and I were talking earlier, we might come back and say that a life, or a water meter has a life to it. And after ten years, every ten years, a new meter needs to be purchased and, and installed on, on the existing one. Because over time, accuracy is going to, you know, decrease. It's not going to maintain. So really, it's kind of, I'd like to see it in both sides, really focused on the sewer.
Well, I think it would be a good idea to probably do it on both sides because, I mean, there again, I mean, anything we can do to make the water system more efficient is going to be better for everybody in the city in the long run. So I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at a percentage increase of two percent or whatever on both.
And there's, there's another community, close relation to us, that had to turn around and do a huge water plant upgrade. And the impact to their citizens' water bill was thirty-six percent to do a bond issue to pay for that. And, you know, we're talking about forty-eight cents, possibly a dollar a month at this particular time, which helps put some cushion behind doing any type of bonding. That's way better than being forced into something where we don't have any cash and we have to turn around and do a twenty, thirty percent increase in a water bill to pay for an, an expansion because we didn't plan for it.
So do we have a, you know, a target figure of two percent on each is something to start with?
Yeah, I think two percent on each would be fair. It's not the three percent that we could do. When we look at the numbers, and, and these numbers are based off three percent, so that over three years, it'd raise seven hundred and eighty-three thousand. Ten years would be two point two million and twenty years would be four point two million, doing a three percent increase. And I think we can back that down because we really don't know what costs we're going into yet, but we just want to plan that we have some cushion and some type of reserve. And we do have reserve now, but just help grow that so we can prepare for anything in the future. Okay. Okay. Can I get George first and then we'll come to you? George?
I know Jack and John were both related to this. In the past, the council has just flat, wouldn't get around to raising the rates. And then it came to a point where, where it really hurt and whenever it happened, it filled the chambers up and, because it hurt. It hurt when you really, when you really have to raise it. So I, I kind of like the idea of going gradually. That way, we won't have to come in and do a six or seven percent increase down the road because you really feel that.
Good point. George? Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, the bonding, you think it's just, you borrow the money and add some interest, but there's a lot more to it. There's probably fifty, sixty thousand dollars with the fees that we entail on a, on a bond issue for the finance guy and the attorneys and stuff. So there's fifty or sixty right off the bat. It gives you no real benefit other than you have to do it. And then you figure, you know, the interest rate is going to be three to four percent and on, let's say, a three million dollar project, by the time you pay it off, you've doubled that amount. So it, there's a lot of reasons to get ahead of the game. And if you don't have enough to pay it off, but at least keep it down, I think your, your money certainly ahead for that reason.
Thank you, Jack. Jim?
Well, excuse me. I think it's wise to be planning ahead. I like that, that you're doing this and I appreciate that we're thinking ahead like this. So, you know, I look at it myself as a, as a citizen, you know, I'll happily pay the forty-eight cents for the sewer just to stay ahead of the, the game on this. I think it's, I think it's wise to do, especially since we haven't, you know, there's been no rate increases for several years, the way it sounds. So it seems appropriate and I would support it.
Thanks, Jim. George?
Yeah, do we know what the rate increase would be for the water?
So what's our, what's our water base? Twenty-six?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
So at two percent, it would be?
Forty-two cents.
Forty-two cents.
Very similar.
Yeah, I'm, we're going to have to do something sooner or later. I think gradually doing is the best way to go. Some of my low-income folks in my ward, I think if we look down the road, six, seven, eight percent, that's going to really hurt them. But I think if we do it gradually, the two percent, I'd rather do both at the same time as opposed to just one and then doing another one later. I think this coincides with everybody's, if they have a budget, they can budget for it, even though it's forty-two cents. To some people, that's a lot of money. But I think if we do it gradually, down the road, we won't have to come up with those funds. So I'm in favor, two percent on both.
Okay. Thank you. Gary?
Well, it seems like everybody's in agreement here. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we increase the water and sewer rates by two percent.
Okay. Melvin?
I'll second that. I'm not one to raise the rates or anything, but I see that's more of an investment than anything and, you know, that's less than ten bucks a year or so.
And, and one thing, too, that we have to keep in mind, when, when we get to the point with the CCUA that we need to, to go ahead and start making plant upgrades, with all the regulations are out there, we don't know what the hidden costs are going to be when we start doing work, that they don't come back and say, well, this, this, and this don't meet the, the standard today and you have to fix these items as well. And that's something we're concerned about, too, with the CCUA, what that looks like regulatory-wise, when we start doing some type of changes, there could be some more significant costs that, that we don't know of yet. Danielle?
I just, I want to clarify the recommendation. The recommendation is to increase two percent, the water base rate and the sewer base rate.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
George?
Now, that two percent, is that just going to be on the base of the water or is that going to be on the total water bill?
Base.
Just the base. Okay. Because I know, I know some people water their lines and some people need a lot of water. Thank you.
That's true. All right. We have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to governing body remarks and we'll start with Jim.
I just appreciated the dialogue tonight and the forward thinking, some of these agenda items. That was, that was a good discussion, so. Everybody have a good, good week.
Thanks, Jim. Joel?
Nothing.
I don't have anything.
I'm good. I don't have anything tonight.
George?
Yeah, with the warm weather coming up that we're having now, we're getting ready, we're planning on the fishing derby this year. We'll be looking at some, some dates on that in June possibly. So everyone, I know, looks forward to that. This will be our ninth year. Thank you.
John?
Okay. I'll make a motion. We'll hear.
Uh, one thing. When does the date go into effect?
I would say it would be February first since the, the end, I mean, we're looking at the end of January where we had to make an action. Melvin, did you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?